Councilmember Kearns.
Here.
Councilmember Mosley.
Here.
Councilmember Motney.
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Mayor Meloambe.
Here. And Madam, do we have any public comment?
We received public comment emailed from Michelle Grasher that was provided to council earlier today. And we have one person that is registered to speak and his name is Art Rodriguez. And he'll come forward after you do your message.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views. Speakers should maintain civility. And focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time seized. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Art Rodriguez, resident of Normal, Illinois, but I'm also the trustee for Normal Township. I'm here representing the McLean County Veterans Assistance Commission. We are located at 200 Front Street, fourth floor. The reason why I'm here is there are approximately 10,000 veterans in McLean County. The majority live inside Bloomington City limits. As we've seen during COVID and past, many people are sitting there saying, I need help with my water bill, my rent, my utilities. The Veterans Assistance Commission is here to do that. We function off of taxpayer money, so we don't play around with it. It does come out of the property taxes. The state law allows us to be at point zero three for every $100 assessed. We are operating currently less than point zero one and very efficiently. The reason why we can operate a lot less than most counties is because we reach out to our community partners. Such as LifeSeal, the laborers, Project Oz, the YWCA. When we have a problem where we can involve a community partner, this is where we reach out. So please, when you go out campaigning. You'll see a flag out there. You may not see a flag out there, but if there's a veteran and there's a need, please send them to our office. We're there to help. We work with the Bloomington Township and we work with Normal Township also with the assistance. The levels of assistance are approximately the same as the township by law. And this is set by the Attorney General of the State of Illinois. And I will take questions if you want. You can ask me a question or interrupt me anytime. I also want to thank the city of Bloomington for assisting over at the arena on Saturday. Mayor, you were there. The Gold Star, America Gold Star Families Celebration. It's a very sensitive subject. Many of these people that were there have lost a loved one in war. And it's not pretty. Some of the stories I hear as vice president of that group are horrid. But I always sit there and say, thank this family. So going on from there, I also wanted to go into that we work with veterans and veteran families. So that means the spouses and the kids. To work on the property tax problems. As you know, Illinois is one of the highest in the country. If a veteran is rated at 70%, the taxes nearly drop to zero. This last year, the legislators added World War II veterans. McLean County had the first veteran file his property tax for abatement. We were actually the first. It was a gentleman who just turned 100 years old out of Leroy who still cuts his grass, cleans his gutters, cuts his neighbor's grass, and I don't know how he does it, but he does it. We're here also to help with that. There are still 4,600 World War II veterans in Illinois. 68 only filed for that, which tells you where the rest of them are. They're in nursing homes, assisted living, somewhere. But please reach out to these people. Many of these people out there, the veterans, some are asking for help indirectly. And it's a very difficult subject to ask. I usually, when I work with these guys for their disabilities, they always tell me, particularly the Vietnam vets, I don't need help. And I always tell them, I'm not here to help you. I'm here to get your wife the benefits. So then they get happy and they start filling out the paperwork and all that. We will have a veteran service officer active in 90 days over on 200 West Front Street. That's the person who can process the claims and help the veteran file the claims. Now, that's not only for veterans. It could be for the spouse of a deceased veteran. And the qualifiers again could be like Agent Orange or any other exposure that they may have had. And then again, we're also working with LifeSeal very intensely and I'm working with the legislators on ADA compliance. I know Bloomington's been working hard on that. It's a tough subject. It's about 36 years old. Funding is tight, but please reach out to us because another word in Springfield can help you get some funding on that. Mr. Mayor, council, I thank you for your time and any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Well, thank you. This is public comment, so we don't do questions, but certainly if you are sticking around, maybe people can ask you questions after the meeting. Thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move approval.
Okay, motion by councilmember Ward. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, councilmember Kearns. We're doing clickers today. Okay, the consent agenda passes. No needs to announce and we're going to move on to the regular agenda. A presentation discussion on housing rehabilitation programs as requested by the Department of Community Impact and Enhancement. And the Administration Department. So I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Jeff Jurgens to introduce the item. I think this has been a long time coming, so I'm happy that we're finally here to talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And as you said, last July, the council adopted a resolution setting forth their priorities related to housing. One of those priorities was housing rehabilitation programs. So even though she's a short-termer, Melissa Hahn, whose last day with us will be on Friday, has been working in her department to prepare a foundation for a housing rehabilitation program. She's here tonight to outline that. We've also invited our Township Assessor Steve Scudder to talk about an existing program that we are going to, I think, try and do a better job of advertising that may help with some housing rehabilitation as well. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to them. And just before I do, again, want to publicly thank Melissa Hahn for all of her work with the city. Has been with us for nine years and has really touched a lot of different areas within the city. So appreciate her work and we'll turn it over to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. So as you're aware, and as the City Manager mentioned, you passed a resolution in July asking staff to look at priorities you set concerning the current housing stock. Really emphasizing the need to strategize to address housing affordability, availability, and quality of housing within the community. One of those key priorities you identified was for city staff to develop a housing rehabilitation program. And that's what I'll be talking to you about tonight. Next slide, please. So we are really looking at taking a multi-pronged approach to neighborhood revitalization within the community. That being city investment, community investment, and also outreach and education. Next slide, please. So first, I kind of wanted to give an overview. We did show this before, but wanted to share with you again kind of what we've done so far. We went back for fiscal year 2020 up through fiscal year of 2024. As you can see from the map provided, we've invested over a million dollars in CDBG funding for housing rehabilitation, over a million dollars in Ida funding for housing rehabilitation. The ARPA investments at the time that this was created, about 624,000 had been spent. But all of the million dollars that was allocated to that program has all been allocated to various projects. So those will all be completed by the end of this upcoming construction season. So all of that funding will be spent as well. And then we've also invested almost $100,000 in our lead hazard reduction program. And we're constantly looking for applications for that program as well. But just wanted to provide a snapshot of the investment the city has made so far. Next slide, please. So for the city investment and programs that we are proposing, this is the first program, the Exterior Repair and Improvement Program. Really what we are looking to do is to help fill the gaps of the current programs that we have and really help amplify the property improvement within the city. So we would propose that these would be owner occupied units within the regeneration area. And on this map, you'll notice that that is the pink area. Eligible work would include but not be limited to repair replacement of roofs, scutters, fascias, offits, porches, siding, driveways, walkways, removal of dead trees. So these are some areas that we really can't hit with some of our federal and state funding that we receive. So as I mentioned, we're really trying to look to fill those gaps of where there's a need. So we'd be looking to set income restrictions at or below 80% of AMI. So for an individual, their income could be up to that 61 to 50. And then for a family of up to eight, they could be at an area meeting income of $115,500. We would look to set the project minimum at 5,000, project maximum at 20,000 per project. We would look to set the project minimum at five thousand, project maximum at twenty thousand per per project. We would recommend an annual budget of a hundred and sixty to two hundred thousand dollars. And just to kind of give, you know, example of something similar, right now, we on average have budgeted about a hundred and twenty five for the Rust Grant Program that's managed through the Historic Preservation Commission. So this is kind of in line with that as well, as far as the amount looking to budget for the whole program. Next slide, please. The other housing rehabilitation program that we are proposing is Minor Home Repair and Improvement Program. Once again, we'd be looking for owner occupied units within that regeneration area, so that pink area on the map. Looking for owner occupied homes or mobile home units within the city's corporate limits. Eligible work would be replacement of defective water heaters, HVAC, mobile home roof repair, accessibility ramps, radon mitigation testing. Once again, this would really help us to fill a gap that we can't really meet with our federal and state fundings, especially with the mobile homes, because they don't own the land, they only own the home on the land. So a lot of times, we are not able to meet their needs with the programs that we currently have. Once again, looking at that same annual income of at or below eighty percent AMI, project minimum of five thousand with a project maximum of ten thousand, and we'd be recommending an annual budget somewhere between that forty to fifty thousand. And once again, just to kind of give context, we on average have budgeted about fifty five thousand for the Funk Grant Program that we use for maintaining our historic homes within the city. So it's in line with that amount as well. Next slide, please. So in that multi-pronged approach, I talked about the city investment. This piece is the community investment. So as part of our larger programs, we'd be looking to institute a Community Impact Week, something that we would do every year. This would be a set program that we would establish, and we would look to roll it out, you know, during the the warmer months when the weather allows, to set that Impact Week, and we'd look for volunteers to do minor maintenance and repair services for homeowners or homes within the regeneration, the pink, or the and the preservation area, which is the orange on the map. So we'd really be looking to expand this to include both of those areas. We would look to recruit volunteers from trades and labor unions, which we've already started those conversations, and they're very willing and on board. Also looking to partner with other community organizations such as Bloomington Normal Community Land Trust, and then also getting neighborhood volunteers within the the neighborhoods where we're working. For materials and supplies, we'd look to get those donated by local businesses and or through funding allocated by the city. And looking to do a project maximum of five thousand for each project for this Community Impact Week. We'd really be looking to do minor repairs such as repair and placement of exterior doors, repair replacement of mailboxes, minor repair and painting of porches, accessibility ramps, yard cleanup and landscaping. We want to make sure that there are items, there are items in there that, you know, volunteers would be able to do without needing, you know, specific training or or certification. Next slide, please. So as a continuation of that, we anticipate doing like a vote, vote for your block system where residents could nominate their block or another block for the Community Impact Week. And then city staff would still take applications from those within the area, making sure that we've got owner occupied housing units, annual household income at or below fifty percent AMI, and then preference given to veterans and residents with a disability. So we would have some preference for those that we feel would be the most within need for this type of program. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to turn it over to Steve and let him talk about some of the homestead improvement exemption and programs offered and available.
Yeah, the homestead improvement exemption helps in adding square footage or additional improvement to the property. So garages, swimming pools, decks, porches. Those all qualify for the exemption where your assessment wouldn't increase because of that additional attribute. So the value would stay locked over four years up to at the assessment before the improvement to the end of the four years to qualify a reduced assessment and the fourth year, then the improvement would be added to the assessment. So they get the four years of benefit on additional square footage such as, and I'll say basement square footage finish also. Any questions on that?
All right, next slide, please. Thank you. So as I mentioned, part of our approach would be additional outreach and education. So our first piece of that is our Housing Resource Fair that we're having on March nineteenth at Eastland Mall. We currently have twenty nine vendors registered to be there and really are getting, you know, everything from lenders to those that help individuals currently experiencing homelessness. We're going to have the Grants Division there to talk about the rehab programs that we have. We're going to have our Community Enhancement Division there to talk about property maintenance, compliance, any concerns, talking to landlords, talking to renters. IDA is going to be there. We've got the Department of Human Services. We've got some property managers that will be there as well to talk about potential available units they have. So really trying to get anything related to housing, make sure that we've got plenty of vendors there to meet with people. And that will be from ten AM to two PM. Next slide, please. So in addition to the Housing Resource Fair, the Community Impact and Enhancement Department staff are looking to also hold other events and outreach opportunities as a department, but then also attend other outreach and educational opportunities within the community. So these are just a few right now that they've got on their schedules to attend throughout the next year. So the Mira Housing Fair coming up in April, going to the City County Health Fair, Juneteenth Celebration, attending some of the downtown farmers markets to provide information, Pride Fest, West Fest, Chamber Nonprofit Fair. So this will be, as I mentioned, the the grant staff talking about the various programs that are available, and then also the Community Enhancement Division talking about, you know, answering any questions related to property maintenance, compliance, and just being out and accessible within the community to answer any questions people may have. Next slide, please. And that's all I have. We can take any questions you have.
Okay, do we have any questions? Well, let me ask the first question. So how many homes do you anticipate that we would be able to impact by doing this? And how much housing do we add to the stock by doing this?
So for these programs, you know, once again, it would depend on how much was allocated, whether we kind of did that minimum or maximum for each of those programs. For the Community Impact Week, it would be hard to say, just depending on how many people would sign up. Are really, you know, part of our our goal with that is for and and for the other rehab programs as well, is for people to remain in their homes. So we don't have as many people displaced or unable to stay where they are, and then the home becomes, you know, vacant and further in disrepair. So really to hopefully keep people where they are, aging in place, not displaced, and not able to find other housing in the community because they can't afford it and and in safe, safe housing. So, you know, if we were able to do the two hundred thousand for the exterior repair and improvement, and everybody got, you know, the maximum possibly looking at doing a hundred homes, that would just kind of depend on funding levels and and really what's needed. So some of our programs even now, you know, not everybody needs the maximum amount of of funding.
So do we, how many homes are we, do we think we have that are in this, you know, in in a state of disrepair that might need some?
So, sure, so we don't have an exact number. You know, we are kind of working off off the data that we can get. We could further, you know, do a study to get an exact number of what we have. I can tell you that currently on our condemnation list, I do have that somewhere in here. Currently on our condemnation list, we have nine properties that have been condemned by the city. Five of those are single-family homes, one is a mobile home. Looking at the ACS data for twenty twenty three, that they are estimating that there are nine hundred and twenty nine abandoned properties within the city.
Good. Well, thank you. That's it's helpful to know. Okay, I think Councilmember Ward was.
Yeah, thank you for this. Some interesting ideas and look forward to hearing more more about those. Your last comment about abandoned properties, how many did you say again? Could you repeat that?
So for the ACS data, they're showing for twenty twenty three, estimating nine hundred and twenty nine abandoned properties.
So that, I think that that's an important point because something that I've been asking for 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 months and months and months is to get some more information about how we can how we can begin to incentivize people from to redevelop those abandoned properties and those neglected properties. I really appreciate the idea of keeping people in their homes. Absolutely a hundred percent support that. And given that we have almost a thousand abandoned properties, that seems to me a huge gap in in opportunity. And I am, I I will repeat again, what ideas are there out there that can be incentivizing people to redevelop those? Are the, what information and data can you provide? Are those properties, for example, owned by people who live here in our community? Or are they owned by out of town folks who are not, who are just sitting on that property and not doing anything with it? Because if that's the case, we should be incentivizing people to do something with those properties. And I appreciate the idea of of us not raising people's property taxes when they make improvements for four years. Awesome. But what we should be doing is raising the property taxes of those nine hundred and something people who are holding on to properties and not doing anything with them. And I keep asking for us to, as a city, to bring forward information about that, and I never can get an answer. There are communities out there who have done this kind of thing. The city of Detroit, I've said multiple, multiple times, has actually done stuff in this regard. What can you tell us about that?
Councilmember Ward, if I if I can just add what I know in this realm. I know there are, so currently in the state of Illinois, we cannot impose, even under our Home Rule authority, a vacancy tax. But I know that there are conversations going on within the state about that potential. So if if that was allowed, and then this council decided to do something like that, that would be one thing that you could do. And I would also advocate, on the other hand, and we'd have to decide which department this would fall under, you could simultaneously potentially work with the other taxing bodies and say to somebody that's willing to come in and redevelop through an agreement. It it wouldn't fit in the current program that Mr. Scudder is talking about because it's not owner occupied. But you could have the other taxing bodies come together and say, you know, we'll put a tax freeze on that property for X amount of years as an incentive to come in and get that property back on the tax rolls and get somebody living in that property. So those are potentially a thousand homes where you can go at it from both angles. You know, potentially, depending on on where the state law moves on this, potentially a vacancy tax and then potentially an incentive through cooperation with the other local taxing bodies to get those types of properties back on the market.
Does it require a state law change to to do the second option that you were describing?
The incentive?
Yes.
It does not. And we've already had some preliminary conversations. And so that's something that's being discussed and could be another program that gets rolled out to to help with that.
Yeah, I just, I have to, I I don't know how much more emphatically to say this. I I don't want to see us wasting time fooling around with nine properties at a time when we've got nine hundred properties that we can do something about. That that feels like a lot more bang for the buck. So that's my, that was my primary thing. I also would just like to really encourage us to think about timing of fairs that we have. So the the one on the nineteenth of March, we're bringing in all these these groups. Awesome. Smack dab in the middle of the working day of the work week for for people. So the the very people who could benefit from a lot of this, they're they're at work. People in my neighborhood, you know, they're working long hours. And a Wednesday at, from ten to two, is not really gonna gonna cut it for them.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ward. Sorry.
No problem. Hey, I just wanted to follow up on those same questions about those nine hundred and twenty nine abandoned properties. Can you give us kind of an understanding of what that population looks like? And are these people who are current on their current property tax payments and things like that? Just maybe a little bit more context around that.
Sure. So as I mentioned, this is just data that we pulled from the ACS. So we've not dug into, you know, what are these? We've not verified. You know, we've not done a full study of, you know, is that number accurate? Because that's coming from the estimate from the census data. So I can tell you of the ones that that we have condemned, the ones that we are aware of. We are working through administrative court with those properties. It is a very long process to work through administrative court. So, you know, there's, there's been a variety of things from, you know, some of the properties are abandoned because someone dies, and then they're going through the battle of who's the owner and and, you know, people fighting over the property and, you know, we're we're dealing with compliance issues during that time. We've had a couple landlords here recently that both had a lot of properties who have passed. And so we're still working through the legality of who is now the owner, who is now taking responsibility and and working through administrative court with those properties as well. So, you know, we are really trying to do our best to get a better understanding of what's out there, what's available. We have a great relationship with Habitat for Humanity. We just had a meeting with them last week. We've got four properties in the pipeline coming up that they're currently working on. You know, through our properties that we've donated, whether they've been demos through CDBG or demos through IDA. We've got a couple other properties that we were discussing as well, if if they would look at those for redevelopment potential with their program. So are working to do our best with those vacant lots that we have and getting affordable housing back on them.
So with that nine twenty nine, do you have a list of addresses or it's just a number and a data set?
It's just a number and a data set.
So we really don't know if that's accurate. There's no clues from their data as to the location, parcel numbers, nothing like that. Just an allegation that we have nine hundred and twenty nine abandoned.
Whether or not we can, I mean, we'd have to see if we can get other information. There are a couple other resources we've been trying to get data from. We have yet to to get that, but we are working on that.
Well, I think to to Councilmember Ward's point, I mean, to me, I would be doubling down on that, right? That's, you know, a quarter of that estimated shortage. And, you know, if they really are in existence and not habitable today, or perhaps even habitable, just abandoned, that would seem to be an opportunity for for focus. The, just, and then a couple comments. The five thousand dollar project, is that for the materials only? Or is that for materials and estimated labored, even if the labor is volunteered back in your community? Or is that for materials and estimated labored, even if the labor is volunteered back in your community impact day?
That was really just for materials. So kind of just kind of just doing an average of what we would anticipate spending per per project.
Okay. And so presumably it could be more if you receive generous donations
Yes, absolutely.
The private sector.
Yes, or if the council decided that they wanted to allocate funding to that program as well, yes.
And then a a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to spend some time at Youth Build. And I'm just, I understand they own a property within the city of Bloomington that they're working on as a part of their school. So any other opportunities to collaborate with that organization as you talk about these projects and you had a listing of other groups out there?
Yes, oh, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
There are other questions? Oh, Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, um, help me understand what the term abandoned means. I'm hearing multiple things of uh ownership fight within courts. But then when I think of abandoned, I'm I mean, it's like, you know, it's just left for whoever. So help me understand what abandoned means and then like who ultimately takes ownership of that abandoned property? I mean, can the city, does the city take ownership of it and then like auction it off? Or help me understand what that abandoned means.
So generally, we would define a abandoned as there is no one living at the property. There's no one respond responsive for the property that we can't um get in contact with anyone. You know, sometimes we're we're fortunate that um, you know, in some instances, the bank will take ownership. So then at least we've got the bank to work with. Um, but in other instances, there just isn't anyone. Um, the property could be sold if the real estate taxes are sold, it could go to a new owner. Um, you know, we've had instances of that um and now, you know, sometimes it's it's a positive because it's purchased and someone does make the improvements and does rehabilitate the home. So um in instances where we've got a lot of code compliance issues, uh, we do continue to work through the court process to um at times foreclose and and take ownership if that's what's necessary in order to um either get an unsafe structure down um or to um, you know, rehabilitate the property.
Okay, so it sounds like there's a process you have to go through to
Yes.
work through the different scenarios. So that's probably what makes that the difficult for that for nine hundred and twenty-nine properties. But is there any way to kind of simplify that process or?
I don't believe so because we do have to go through the court system. So I don't know that there's really an easier way to do that.
Well, maybe slightly easier uh is there? Let's assume that all those nine hundred and twenty-nine properties are, you know, it's a fact that they're out there. How how would you go about, you know, doing an inventory to make sure that it's it's accurate? And how long do you think that would take?
Really, I think we'd need to probably look at a third party to come in and do a study and really do a block by block to evaluate what was there. I mean, we can continue to see if we can get other data sets, but I don't know that we're going to get down to address, you know, down to pins. I I don't know that we'll get um that level of data. We are still trying to get, like I said, some other information about uh from other federal agencies. What they're showing is either vacant or not having a a resident at that address. Um, so time wise, I mean, it it could take, you know, up to six months to really dig in to to verify, you know, what the total number is, if not longer, depending on whether or not we wanted to do um, just kind of with staff digging into the data to see how close we can get or if we wanted to actually outsource that to have, you know, a third party come in and really look at block by block. What do we have, you know, in the community?
That's good. Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
So if what you were saying, it follows to me if what you were saying to Councilmember Lee is accurate, that you don't, a property becomes considered abandoned if there's no one responsive. Presumably, no one's paying the property taxes, right?
Potentially. Um, I don't know for the ACS, I did not look at how they were defining it. So they could be defining it differently than the way we're defining it, but that's how we would view it.
But it seems like maybe that would be a starting place if, right? I mean, surely you have the list of people who aren't paying their property taxes.
The county, yeah, the county does, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, that that's like a public record that you could just look at presumably.
Yes.
And that maybe would narrow the list a bit. And I'm assuming they wouldn't have six months to give that information out. They would have to do it in a much shorter timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, we could request, yeah, we could request what
Could we request that, please? I'm I'm like formally asking you to do that.
Yep.
Um, what's the timeframe for that to at least start there?
Yeah, I mean, we can request it tomorrow.
Okay, and then how long would they have to, what what's a realistic estimate? Five days? Awesome. So like by next council meeting, we could have that data. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lockards?
Yeah, yeah, I had something quickly to add. I agree that it seems like there are definitely um, other ways that we can approach this that doesn't require doing a third party study. You know, I think that there's, you know, we're talking about leveraging people power and and neighborhood and people being invested. You know, maybe there's um a way that it can be reported where, you know, na- you know, I know the ones in my neighborhood that are abandoned. I've been knocking knocking on a lot of doors recently too. So um I see that those types of things as well. And so um I think, you know, starting with what uh Councilmember Ward just mentioned, I think there's other strategies that I think we could employ that don't involve hiring a consultant and third party person that we that we can get, you know, some really good information from.
Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, just real quickly, I think the US Postal Service can also help if it's a vacant or abandoned property.
Yeah, we're still working to get the data from them.
Just just for context again, I mean, I I actually read the Panograph's legal notices where you post your lien sales in there. I don't know if I'm using the appropriate terminology there, but how many of those do you have a year? Um, the the city where we're taking um action um, you know, to um to for a lien sale of a property.
You mean to foreclose on a property?
No, not a for- not a bank foreclosure. I'm talking about a a tax lien sale. And again, I don't know if I'm using the right terminology. We can certainly take this offline and follow back up on it. But I know just within the last few days, there was a property listed in Ward nine. Um, and so I'm just, you know, curious, you know, how often um do we have those legal notices that relate to tax sales? I don't know.
I'm, yeah, I'm not familiar with the property you're referring to, so I'm not
Thank you.
Not sure.
Yeah. Leslie, do you?
I was just gonna say, I know that um the county clerk publishes those. Uh, and maybe actually it's the recorder, but either way, there's there is a publication that comes out like you're talking about. I don't know how many happen, but I can assist Melissa in like requesting the information that you're talking about. We could do it through a FOIA five days or they would likely get it to us quicker and find out that as well.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, I I don't mean to be cranky about this, but I I just want to be taken seriously here. And I think we as a council need to be taken seriously here. We've been asking for this kind of stuff for months, if not years. And I think we shouldn't have to be sitting here on the seventeenth of February saying, let's go look at what the post office says, or let's go look at what, let's put a FOIA through. It shouldn't take that. And so at the risk of being cranky, I want some information.
Yeah, and and thanks, Councilmember Ward, and and not taking us cranky at all, but we appreciate that. And I I think we hear that this is something we have been working on. Feels like we're narrowing down on it and um we'll we'll redouble the efforts there and we'll get this information. And um, like I said before, I would like to come up with a program that, you know, maybe there's going to be a stick component to this. But I think we can very easily come up with a CARE program as well to help address these, you know, if it's a thousand properties or if it's eight hundred properties to try and get these properties redeveloped and and uh some good rehabilitation going. So uh we will certainly be giving you that information and we'll be back in touch on this subject.
Uh, thank you. I think we're out of time on this particular item. Uh, but thank you very much, uh, Melissa. This is a a, I guess, a great way for you to, you know, um, move on. But we certainly appreciate all the work that you've done and really have enjoyed uh working with you. Uh, wish you the the best of luck in your new city. I've talked to that one person who hired you, uh, not happy at all, but uh it is what it is. But again, thank you so much for your work. Really appreciate having you here and hope that you'll come back at some point.
Yes. Thank you all. I've I've enjoyed uh my time here. It's been extraordinary. I'm so very grateful for the opportunities I've had. I've greatly enjoyed working with all of you and wish you all the best and I'll be watching.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Every Monday night, right? And thank you very much, Steve. We are moving to item B, a presentation and discussion for the FY two thousand and twenty-six budget preview as requested by the finance department. I know we have uh, you know, quite a few, uh, you know, some challenges as far as the the next budget. But I know the staff has been working feverishly to uh to make sure that we have a balanced budget. So this is, I think, the first in a series of discussions on the budget and looking forward to uh everything that we can we can do to come up with this balanced budget. So with that, I'll I'll turn it over to uh City Manager Jurgens.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, in November of this last year, when we started talking about the property tax, at least for the first time that I can remember, we also started talking about some potential budget issues that we have visibility on. At the time, we were projecting about a three point seven five million dollar deficit. As we worked with our department heads, uh, Scott Rathbun, our finance director, will will likely share some of this. We said we need to be extremely conservative. We need to tighten our belch. Our belts provide a a very conservative um budget for us to review. They did that. Scott crunched the numbers and we ended up with about a five point seven million dollar deficit. Um, Scott will go over a few reasons as to why that deficit grew. Has to do with some of the property replacement tax and other things that that he's been talking about. Uh, Scott and his team, really with all of the directors and with all the administration staff over these last few months, have been going back through the budget, trying to figure out how we can cut that and how we can present a balanced budget that also is not cutting services that will not impact the residents of this community. So we're proud tonight for Scott to uh provide that and to overview that. We ended up cutting, not cutting, I used the wrong word. Scott's gonna come over here and yell at me. Our budget this year is about twenty-one million dollars less than it was last year. That's not all cuts. Some of it is cuts. Some of it just depends on on what projects are ready to go and and what funding sources we have. But we are going to be presenting a budget that's about twenty-one million dollars less than it was last year and a general fund of about nine million dollars less than it was last year. The other thing, and I I think I've talked about this before, I know I have in the press, we're also working on lowering the headcount of the city. Since I started, I've I've not approved, our administration's not approved any new FTE requests. And in fact, we have uh, we have reduced our FTE count by about seven through attrition. Uh, so that's a program that we're working on and we are trying to make the work for the employees easier and rearranging some things, but we are working hard to lower that FTE count. That's a component of of helping us get to a balanced budget. But as Scott will talk about that, that's not the only component to it. So with that, again, I really want to express my appreciation to Scott and his team in finance, but really to all the directors who have rolled up their sleeves and have worked hard to develop a a balanced uh conservative budget for the council to consider. Thank you, Scott.
Uh, thank you, City Manager Jurgens, Mayor Council. Um, you know, we'll clarify some of the um the challenges related to the general fund versus citywide. But tonight, you know, to recap, this is a first look at the FY twenty-six budget. We're gonna look at totals, variances from prior year. That's the way we kind of reflect our our budget preview comparison to the prior year's budget. Um, put some context to the numbers, three hundred plus million dollar budget, even with the cuts this year. It's it's an extensive process, as Jeff alluded to. We started in September, actually August, so we've been working on it for over six months. Uh, department line I line item requests, you know, building the budget from the ground up, basically financed as a very serious review independently between myself and the budget manager manager. We have discussions with administration, follow up with departments, meetings, further discussions with administration uh to try to to lock down, you know, what we need to do. Uh, we had challenges, but we worked together, you know, for that common goal, you know, for making life better, right? Uh, and to and to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. So it's still in, it's still in motion, but it's balanced. And so here we go. Next slide, please. Here we go. I'm actually going to start with the general fund. So um the the general fund is down by nine point four million. Um, it's the largest fund of our twenty-nine funds, you know, all these funds are subsets of the citywide. So we have the general fund, water, sewer, storm, solid waste, et cetera. Um, the challenges, um, as mentioned, uh, have been publicly communicated. We have flattening, we're not unlike other municipalities, by the way, flattening or decreasing revenues, obviously with increasing expenses. So some of those kind of mo- moved our our created issues uh independently. We balanced the general fund with a combination of cuts, operating cuts that we we were projecting to incorporate into the budget going forward and delays in equipment. So there's no impact uh to the residents in FY twenty-six. But a delay in equipment is really not a long term solution. But FY twenty-six will provide us visibility um on the economy, uh, those state revenues that I'll talk about a little bit more, the state distributed revenues, our workforce initiative, process improvement, gaining efficiencies, and the direction of council. So um with that, you know, the the general fund was lowered by about nine point four million. And again, we'll go over those details in just a moment. Then I'm going to go down again to capital projects. Seventy-seven point two uh two million, that's still a large number, but that's down about eleven point three million. Two point nine mil- million of that is related to the general fund funded projects. And then we have another eight point four million. It's really related to some pushouts of some projects in our sewer and storm. So now rolling back up to the citywide of three hundred and ten million, a de- a de- decrease of twenty-one. Most of that's related to the general fund and then the other component is related to some project, capital project kickouts. Um, the general fund, you know, our largest fund, it gets the the focus is related to reserves, the tax uh revenues gener- or or what's substantially uh funds uh that uh that fund. Um, so thirty-seven point five million dollars is the um the reserve balance that we're projecting for the end of year two thousand and twenty-five. And with our cuts and delays, we're actually, at this point in time, we actually have a surplus budget of six hundred and sixty-five thousand. So we're considering that kind of like a cushion related to some of these uncertainties as we go into FY twenty-six or or potentially between now and when we adopt, we might want to add back some equipment or another project. We have seven point four million dollars in in equipment and we're still targeting general fund paying all cash, even with the challenges for its equipment purchases. Next slide, please. So there's a lot going on in this exhibit and it and it's, I'll admit, it's not perfect. It's our best attempt to kind of roll down from our top line budget, which includes capital projects that roll from year to year that can spike in certain years. You know, we had the the library expansion, O'Neill Pool, et cetera. So we we try to take our citywide budget and boil it down to a net operating and then look at what our growth has been. You know, how fast is government growing here in the city of Bloomington? Um, while utilizing these calculations, um, we have an annualized growth from two thousand and seventeen of about two point five percent. And we we break this down further statistically to show an operating cost per person. And right now, we're at about twenty-nine hundred dollars per person. And that also is around a two and a half, it's two point four five, a two and a half percent annualized growth rate some since two thousand and seventeen. Our compensation is the one that's sticking out, and that's one of the reasons, you know, that we're pushing our workforce initiative, looking at reductions in staff. We have grown about four point four point two percent um over the last ten years on an annualized basis. Next slide, please. So I've mentioned that the general fund is our largest fund. So the the, we have a complex financial structure. We have twenty nine funds. Um, some, some funds in this list are grouped by type, so we're not listing all twenty nine. But this puts the the three hundred and eleven million dollar uh, budget into context. So if you look at the twenty twenty six proposed column. If you look, we are top four funds related to total costs and some of these total costs are related to projects. Um, we have the general fund at a hundred and thirty four million, water at forty eight million, state motor fuel tax at thirty four million. And then internal service funds at twenty two million. That's, that's two hundred and thirty eight million dollars of the three hundred and eleven million dollar total budget. So. For the community, you know, this three hundred plus million dollar budget, it it it's kind of hard to wrap your hand, head around sometimes. But those four funds really are driving a significant portion of our budget. And that internal service fund. That one's a little odd, you know, that's where we pay out our our health insurance, casualty insurance, et cetera. So that cost is actually also born inside all the other operating funds. So. You know, in finance, we have a cost for insurance. That's a revenue in the internal service funds and then that's paid out of the internal service funds. We show a gross budget. Some other communities net out transfers and things like that. But that's, that's the part of the of the way we produce our budget. And then just running down the dollar change, you know, just to highlight a couple, uh, the general fund, nine point four million dollar decrease. Something that, you know, we'll be talking about uh, again next week, um, our capital improvement, um, asphalt and concrete fund. The adopted budget shows nearly twelve million, but the actual projects that were budgeted for the year was ten. We were showing a a contribution to reserves. We were setting some money aside for future years. We're doing eight million dollars in that fund. We used to, we, this year, we're doing a subsidy from the general fund, but we can't afford to do that subsidy. From the general fund going forward. And we'll highlight the funding um, components of the asphalt and concrete in just a moment here. And then the water fund is up by six point nine million, really starting to attack some of those uh, projects, you know, that were promised to the community. Related to the rate increase. Next slide, please. So uh, major tax revenues, this, this is where a lot of conversation started back in September. You know, I'm gonna jump kind of to the bottom initially. So right now with these categories, these are not all of our tax categories. But we're showing a one point three million dollar reduction. And to kind of put that into context. When we did the budget last year and we were looking at for twenty five for this year. And we were looking at FY twenty six, we would have incorporated assumptions related to an increase of approximately maybe. Two percent across board, you know, related to inflation. So really, when you're looking at a one point three million dollar reduction in budget. It's probably a two and a half to three million dollar swing um, from year to year. So just um, highlighting a couple of things, you know, property tax held pretty flat, the the library at two to hundred and forty seven thousand dollar increase in property tax. The rest is related to TIFs. Um, I'm gonna skip down a little bit. One of the odd ones on this is we have a reduction in local use tax. So. Not to get in too much of the weeds, but um, there was legislation a few years ago related to online retail series, out of state online retail sales. There was a legislation that required law, large online retailers to collect state tax for Illinois. It was paid in in the form of use tax. So that's just the base six point two five percent. And then it was distributed to communities on a per capita basis. The first, uh, the second round of legislation. Added the the local component. So those online retailers started, needed to collect home rule. So it reduced local use and moved revenues up to home rule and state sales tax. And then we found out via I M L that they're, they're closing another loophole. I guess in that process related to online retailers and they're expecting. I M L with their projections, local use tax for us to go down by another one point six million dollars this coming year. But we've offset that in home rule and state sales tax, one for one. Hopefully we'll get a bump there in the coming year because home rule. Is the extra, extra two point five percent. But what that does here is our state sales tax, because of the grocery tax elimination. We would have had, you know, we were gonna incorporate a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar reduction related to the grocery tax. But our state sales tax is is showing a relatively flat from year to year. And then the last thing to highlight, being getting a lot of conversation during the monthly reports. Replacement tax, otherwise known as P P R T, Person or Property Replacement Tax. Uh, the state overfunded this. A few years back, our highest replacement tax year was in twenty three. We received six point four million dollars. You can see that this coming year, we're budgeting two point six million. So that's almost a four million dollar decrease from our our highest uh, level a few years ago. I M L said that uh, the state is gonna continue to do a clawback this coming year. That'll be three years in a row now, a hundred million. So it's difficult to get visibility on where that tax is going. So when I highlighted. Getting, I use that word visibility again, FY twenty six, getting visibility on the overall economy and state distributed revenues. Hopefully we'll get some, some idea of if that's over next year and if they're gonna be bumping that back up. One last uh, component on this slide. Asphalt and concrete fund is funded fully by local motor fuel tax. So you can see that's four million dollars. We're taking that down by a couple hundred thousand. Hopefully we'll see a rebound related to Quick Trip and the Market Street construction being over, but right now we're thirty thousand dollars under per month in FY twenty five. So a hundred percent of local motor fuel tax and ten percent of home rule sales tax, which is thirty point seven million. So that's four million plus three point oh seven million. So direct revenues into. Asphalt and concrete are right around seven million dollars, between seven and seven and a half million dollars. And we're budgeting doing eight million. This coming year, that's because of reserves, putting some money aside from ARPA and the the subsidy in the current years. Next slide, please. Um, I'll roll through these pretty, pretty quickly. This is just a breakdown of the citywide uh, budget. It's the income statement. Uh, the revenues. So this is gonna total the three hundred and eleven million. Uh, use of reserves, reminder to everyone. Um, this is not real revenue. This is use of savings. This is how we balance our budgets to show revenues equal expenditures. So basically we'll come in under thirty, almost thirty four million dollars if this comes to fruition. So state motor fuel tax is the largest component of that. And we have reductions in intergovernmental revenue and a large component of intergovernmental revenue is where we reflect. I E P A loans, that state revolving fund loans. So we kind of show a cash basis budget. So reductions in borrowing are related, are are shown in um, our our budgetary process as revenues. And then rolling down charges for services up ten point three, three million. Ambulance has continued to, uh, the G met program continues to increase. But six point three million of that is the water uh, increase, the the second thirty three point three percent. And then um. Miscellaneous revenue is not a large change, but I just want to highlight that. Within the miscellaneous revenue category, that's where we reflect outside borrowing and we're looking to do outside borrowing. Uh, bonding for the water fund projects. Next slide, please. Citywide expenditures, we'll, we'll kind of go through a list in a little bit more detail on the, with the um, general fund in just a moment. Six million dollar increase in salaries, four point nine million of that is related to the general fund and we'll go through the details in that in just a moment. Uh, contractuals. This category gets a lot of attention because of its name. Um, it's not just consulting. This is a very broad category. We have to assign all of our accounts. You know, we have four thousand accounts in our budget. So contractuals will include everything from repairs and maintenance to credit card fees, casualty property work, work comp insurance and actual consulting. So it's up about three million dollars, four point three percent. A lot of this related to insurance increases, uh, but we also have increases in B C P A related to um. Artist fees, uh, because the B C P A is doing so well. Commodities up two million. Highlighting that a million of that is for water meters. So um, our our water fund is replacing a lot of water meters and hopefully we're gonna recapture some of the lost revenue. Related to old meters or or meters that just aren't functioning properly. Uh, capital expenditures way down, eleven point three million decrease in capital projects. And uh, seven point eight million decrease in capital equipment, seven million of that being for the general fund itself. And then other intergovernmental expense, uh, this is a million dollar increase in the in public safety pension is police and fire. Next slide, please. Okay, so general fund, this is a very busy slide. Um, general fund balancing. We mentioned that there were challenges relate, related to flattening revenues and and decreasing revenues. Um, you can see over in the right on on the table there, I just listed some until they added up to five point seven million. This is just kind of coincidental. But we had grocery tax uh, is going into effect in January of twenty six. So that's three months. Of our twenty six budget, seven hundred fifty grand, replacement tax, just rounding it off. It's really one point six, one point seven million. And we're lowering our interest income amount. Rates are going down. Uh, vacancy savings. We, we talked about this a lot a few months ago. We did have two million dollars in vacancy savings. We talked about having to remove that due to. Changes in the hiring for police and fire. However, we did realize, you know, there's gonna be vacancies, you know, Melissa's leaving, there's gonna be vacancies. Um, and also we have the attrition program. So we created a matrix. To uh, project what that's gonna be. So we took it from two million down to one point one million. So this nine hundred thousand dollar sort of hit. Um, we've had pension increase of the million dollars and then we'd had union agreements that were settled during FY twenty five that weren't budgeted for about a million. So that's. That's some of the challenges. And then we just had normal expense increases that you'll see when we get to that slide. So uh, as as the city manager mentioned, after all the departmental submissions, we, after messaging to them, we need to, we need to keep things tight. We had a five point seven million dollar deficit and this included almost six million dollars in equipment. Our average is about five million dollars. So you can see here a list of um. Categories that we we cut after meeting with the departments to come up with two point five million. Uh, their highlight is the FTE reductions so far, uh, about seven hundred thousand. And then we did equipment delays of the five point nine million of three point nine. And that got us total adjustments of almost six point four million. We needed five seven. So at this point in time, we actually have a positive surplus budget in in the, in the general fund. There's a lot of um. Variables though, you know, in the coming year. So we're gonna look at that as a cushion or we may decide we want to actually add something back to the equipment before. Or the projects before we uh, adopt the budget. I want to highlight though that um, we did not, we do not have any transfer to the capital improvement fund. We are going to execute two point two million dollars in projects. Uh, but that's from transfers we're doing this year related to projects. We're not gonna execute. We had. One point nine million for fire station land acquisition. We're not doing that, but we're gonna do the transfer this year. So kind of hidden in here, we have a, a starting deficit of five point seven million. This is under the full deficit um, table. Less than two and a half million dollar operating savings, so about three point two million. And then our usual transfer of two and a half, you know, this is gonna leave us, this is really an unrealized deficit around four point eight, really like five million dollars. But to kind of summarize, before we go through some of the details, um, as the city manager mentioned. Balance the general fund budget with no impact to the services to the community. With the idea that FY twenty six will give us a lot of visibility on some, some things that that could potentially change dramatically over the coming year, the economy. The state revenues, um, our process improvement, our workforce and council, council directions. Next slide, please. Am I doing a time? Four minutes. Ooh, I'm good. Okay. So use of reserves, um, since um, you know, we were struggling to balance, we're not using reserves at this point. There are a lot of projects um, that are being eyed for the use of reserves related to Connect Transit, uh, Market Street Garage. Downtown Streetscape, Public Works Campus. But as of now, there's no um. Budgeted use of reserves. We actually have a contribution to uh, reserves of the six sixty five. There the taxes you can see is one point seven million. Again, uh, we, at this time last year, we would have been looking at, you know, a million dollar increase for twenty six. So it's really like a two and a half to three million dollar swing there. Charges for services, dollar change of one point five million, six hundred twenty five grand related to B C P A admission fees. Wonder, they're having a wonderful season. We're expecting that to continue. The offset though is really that you're gonna, you see that about same increase in expenditures related to artist fees, et cetera. In the expense category or expense, yeah, category. Investment income highlighting five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, you can see at the bottom here, I put a a note, net decrease in revenues excluding use of reserves is six hundred seventy two thousand dollars. So on a hundred plus million dollar budget, usually, you know, you're looking at a two percent increase. You know, that, that's a hu, two million dollars on a hundred million and we have a decrease of six hundred seventy two thousand. So that's why I'm saying there's like a swing. Related to the expectations this time last year of two and a half, three million. Next slide, please. So the top four salaries benefits, contractions, commodities, um, and other intergovernmental, those are really the main increases in the expenditures, the four point nine million. Uh, in salaries, you can see we've created a bit of a reconciliation here. Uh, the vacancy slash attrition, uh, the change from two million to one point one was a nine hundred thousand dollar add. Uh, the million dollars um, in in union contracts that uh. Occur during, during FY twenty five, not capturing the budget, are gonna be captured in the, in the twenty six budget. Overtime. So um, police uh, related to uh, increase in rate. That's not their, all of that's not police, but that's a. A big component of it. And also all the special events downtown are driving our overtime up. And we are really though digging into the overtime category. But some of it is, is one of those, it's like one of those good, bad things. Did you want to say something, Jeff?
Yeah, just uh, to dig in here, just to steal thirty seconds of your time. And when we talk about the vacancy savings being down and that we've changed the way, you know, we're hiring more fire and and first responders and and police officers. That's a good thing. So we don't want the community or the council to to think that that we're saying that's a negative. We are, you know, when we're looking at attrition, we really want to keep those first responders staffed up. So we're happy with being able to have those staffed up. And just want to say, you know, it's obviously a cost, but it's, we view it as a positive thing for the community. Thanks. Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, agree one hundred percent. So this, this is kind of just laying out the facts without, you know, like. Pointing fingers, I I would say, you know, and the same thing with the pensions, you know, like. That we have a hundred percent funding policy, the the amount went up, but it's it's a significant amount, amount, it's material. So it's being highlighted as far as the the. The delta from year to year. Um, and then at the bottom, I have a, a, a. A note saying net increase in expenditures excluding transfers and equipment, because you can see the capital expenditures went down by seven point three million. A reduction in equipment. Is seven point five million. So we have a seven point five million dollar really net increase in expenses in the six hundred seventy two net decrease in revenues. Next slide, please. So uh, general fund by function, this is just for perspective on the general fund. You know, it's the largest fund. It should get some attention. Um, you know, you can see. Not, I'm not picking on public safety, but public safety is sixty nine point six million of the hundred and thirty three. That's fifty two percent of the total budget. Uh, parks, uh, we're, we're including B C P A in here because our accounting system, B C P A department code is right in the middle of parks and and so. We're still dealing with how to split that out. Uh, is sixteen point two million and that's twelve percent. And then I just want to highlight too, the certain, there's a couple of line items here that that don't get a lot of attention, but we do fund. Public transportation, connect transit, you know, one point seven million dollars. Um, and then McLean County Health gets ten percent of our home rule and that's at three million. And then just um, highlighting that while the general fund is primarily funded via tax revenues, there are service fees, you know, we saw a significant component. Um, on the revenue page, for public safety, it's primarily related to ambulance fees, but you can see their budget is almost seventy million. Um, when you, when you apply the revenues, it's about sixty one million, so about nine million dollars in revenue. And then parks and rec, and a part of this is a B C P A, but it takes their net, their total expense down to about eleven, from sixteen point two down to eleven point one. Next slide, please. And lastly. So capital projects, seventy seven point two million dollars. It is down. We're going to come back next week and provide a line item detail. By, and then the department heads are going to explain uh, all the projects and provide the council an opportunity to discuss this publicly. So for today though, we're just gonna go through the totals, um, the asphalt and concrete, there's the ten million I was referencing earlier, uh, down to eight million. There, there is, um, do you want to add that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there's gonna be a big asterisk next to that one and we'll explain that. Probably get into more detail next week. We know that's a a very important thing for our community. And we're, we're gonna be doing a lot of infrastructure work and we'll be talking more about that next week, including a lot of roadwork. So uh, more to come on that.
Yep. And then, um, you know, you can see sewer and storm, those are down pretty significantly. Those are some pushouts of the East Street Basin. There are a couple smaller East. Street Basin projects still budgeted to keep that moving forward, but there was four million dollars in each of those funds budgeted for FY twenty five that are gonna get. Pushed out to FY twenty seven. And next slide, please. So what's next? I I I just referenced this. Um, uh, we'll have a budget update uh, next Monday, going through the capital projects, uh. Project by project, uh, given by the department head. So seeing some of the details behind those, well, the proposed budget, March tenth. Public hearing on the twenty fourth and the final adoption on April fourteenth. So I I, at the risk, I'm gonna repeat myself, but. You know, in summary, you know, the cities, we're, we're in good, a good position. I mean, we have a strong local economy. Um, there's a lot of development. We have Rivian, Rivian and Ferrero. We're just having to deal with a couple of adjustments. Um, that occurred over the last year, you know, get some visibility. You know, discuss alternatives and keep moving forward, you know, with that goal. Continuing to deliver the services that the community needs and deserves and making life better. And, you know, being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. Next slide, please. And um, the city manager already said this, but I just want to say thanks to um, my staff and all the department heads. You know, we, we met with them, we took up a lot of their time. Um, you know, we, we met with them, we took up a lot of their time, a lot of emails. It's a lot of work to pull together a three hundred and eleven million dollar budget. And so um, I personally um, appreciate and council and administrations efforts in this, so questions and comment.
Yeah, well, thank you, and we also extend our appreciation because I I. Doing this since August, right? And to get to this point, I think is definitely a lot of work in addition to everything else that your staff has to do. So please extend our appreciation to them. I wanted to ask if you, we could go back to slide number eight. Think that's the slide that shows attrition. There was something that I wanted to ask about.
The attrition addition?
Yes.
Right. So, yeah, that, that number looks odd there. Cause that we had, when the five point seven million dollars was compiled, we had a number in for. An attrition goal. And a vacancy goal. And when we decided to really lay it out and kind of firm up. What we were shooting for annually, it ended up adding another three hundred fifty thousand. So that, that's like a net add at that point in time. Right now, we have one point one million dollars in vacancy savings slash attrition goal for F Y twenty six. Um, baked into the budget.
Okay, and and that goal is is in part, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Scott, but potentially losing another twelve F T Es, correct?
Right, but we only.
The general fund.
We only account for half of that because during it, we we assume that it will take at least a year to run through that. So we're going to recognize half of that saving, so we're being conservative on that, otherwise we have to realize that on day one.
Okay, so the full target was six hundred thousand. Or is, I'm trying to understand how all of this works. So you you have three fifty, three hundred fifty thousand and then full target six hundred thousand.
Well, yeah, so city manager just just mentioned that our goal was twelve. So we assume just for easy math purposes, a hundred thousand dollars per. So that would be one point two million. And then we only feel that we would recognize half of that in a given year because it's going to take a half, it's going to take the full year. To get to the twelve, so that's the six hundred thousand dollar target.
Okay, got it, okay.
And the three fifty is just what we had to net net adjust. From what we had already assumed in the five point seven million, so it's. It's, it's a, it's a number where you can't connect the dots on that one.
Okay, all right.
And that the six hundred is is a, is a number we're targeting.
Okay.
And that will grow kind of like that six hundred for this year would be one point two the next year. So it's kind of a table that looks like a waterfall kind of deal, you know, where it accumulates over time.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Council member Ward and then Montney.
Thanks for this, it's helpful to go through this and I appreciate your, your very clear explanations. I do have a few questions, um, I can't remember which slide it was on, but the slide that talked about money for the health department.
Mental health.
Is that what it is?
County Health?
Yeah, is that?
Three mil?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that for for behavioral health?
Yes.
Okay, and has that actually been allocated to anything recently? Or is that still the money that's just piling up and?
That's the, yeah, that's the shared sales tax and and that's split into a few different categories. Uh, having conversations with the county in the town about that and and I'd say more to come on that.
Yeah, I I really long from hearing more, um, lest I get cranky again. I also am very curious to know um, where those um, F T Es are coming from for attrition.
We ca, I captured that, that we're still working on that and we will provide that to council. Not sure we were ready to publicly disclose that. I will, I will say that we've got two from finance, so.
Well, fair enough, I, I would like to know what those numbers are before we. Um, I guess agree to a budget, just because I don't, I I'm hearing from people in my, in my neighborhoods. Real concerns about certain departments being expected to do more with less. And they're not liking the outcome. Um, so they're, they're seeing certain departments stretched very thin and and feel like it's, it's showing. Um, so I'd like to be able to have wide open eyes about what, what it equals. When we, when we start to make cuts like that. Um, cause I mean, we talk about it as attrition, but in reality, it's a cut. There's, there's no way of of making a euphemism about it. We can call it efficiencies, we can call it attrition, all of that stuff. But basically we are cutting. Human resources and we just need to acknowledge that. Um, the other thing I want to put a word in for um, speaking of numbers, right? When we talk about the, the public safety numbers and and the positions, right? We have to acknowledge that, that not all of the, the um. The positions that are filled by, by the people who are not yet twenty one. Right, they aren't able to function fully, so that, correct me if I'm wrong. But if we have extra firefighters listed, that doesn't necessarily mean they're all able to, to. Do everything.
That, that's correct, so under the new system, we could potentially hire a firefighter that's still being trained as a paramedic. Um, and so um, they might not fully be able obviously to operate yet as a paramedic.
So the numbers look like they have more people than they really functionally do.
Yeah, so we can, we can provide those numbers, uh, but but uh, we are getting more people in the door and they are getting those. People, people trained to your point, but yes, it does, yes.
And then the last thing I want to say is that I, I would like some data about the public safety pensions. And where we are at, um. Where we are with having a plan to fully fund the pensions. Rather than simply doing the minimum. And I, I'm not sure where the, the million dollars brings us to. I'd like to know that and then I'd like to know where we are in terms of having a five. X whatever year plan. To do more than just the minimum. Thank you.
Council member Ward? Oh, sorry. Uh, I must be scared of you because you said you were cranky, so.
So thank you so much again for the depth of all the information you provided. So when you talk about the year over year growth rate, the two and a half percent, are you talking about on the net operating budget? Or are you talking about the overall budget?
On the net budget.
So um, you don't have to give it off the top of your head, but I mean, next time I think it would be helpful to show that contextually to the actual total budget. As opposed to just the net operating budget. If you don't mind for me, that would, that would be helpful to keep these things in in context. The only other question I have relates to the I E P A loan on the Locus Colton project. Um, so with the allocation of the ARPA funds to the acceleration of that project. Um, I'm, I'm making an assumption, but I want to check it with you. That our obligation to borrow would have been materially impacted by the amount of the ARPA funds. That we allocated to the Locus Colton project.
That is definitely correct. We, we uh, we subsidize, the general fund subsidize. Over ten million dollars related to Locus Colton. Wow, that was a year and a half, two years ago, time flies now. Um, I I remember calculating the interest savings that those funds would have realized due to that. Uh, but these were different phases, but yes, yes.
Would, you have a ballpark, so you calculated that?
Ten million at four percent over twenty five years, no, I don't. I think it was, it was in the millions.
Very good, okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, any other questions? No. Okay, I think that is it, thank you, Scott, I'm sure there's going to be more discussion about this in the future, so. What is next? I think we're going to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and I assumed we were going to have enough fun tonight talking about the budget and housing, so I actually do not have a report tonight.
Oh, wow, that's amazing, it's uh. Yeah, so I, I think that is it, well, why don't we make up an executive session and? Uh, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Okay.
Second.
All right, uh, council member Ward and Karen, so all those in favor, so if I was saying hi?
Hi.
Hi, okay, we are adjourned, thank you all very much, see you next Monday.